Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Council Meeting this evening. This meeting is being held at Town Hall Monday evening, November 5th, 2018. This meeting is being broadcast live and will be replayed several times over the next week on the Town's Cable Information Channel 1301 and will also be available for viewing on the Town's website. I'm Steve McDougall, the Mayor of Lexington, and this time I would like to introduce to you my fellow council members. To my left is Mayor Pretem Hazel Livingston.
Good evening.
To her left is Councilmember Steve Baker.
Good evening.
To my right is Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Good evening.
To her right is Councilmember Ron Williams.
Good evening.
To his right is Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Good evening.
At this time, I would like to welcome Pastor Pat Riddle from St. Stevens Lutheran Church to please come forward and offer invocation for tonight's meeting. Good evening Pastor Riddle, thank you for being here.
Mayor, Council. It's good to see you.
Good to see you.
The psalmist writes, "Oh, give thanks to the Lord, for he is good and his steadfast love endures forever." President Franklin Roosevelt proclaimed, "To set aside a day in autumn of each year on which to give thanks to the Almighty God, for the blessings of life is a wise and reverent custom." Let us pray. Oh, God of the harvest, we give you praise and hearty thanks for giving us the good earth. We thank you for this year's harvest, for those who tend it, for daily food to eat, for food that we can share with others. In this Thanksgiving season, renewing us concern for the people who dwell with us in our beloved town, our state, our nation, and indeed our world. We offer thanks for all the blessings of this life, our homes in which we live, our families, our friendships, our vocation, our opportunities for service, and the freedoms bestowed by you in which we enjoy the blessings of liberty. Be with, we pray, the lonely, the forgotten, the sick, the suffering, and those for whom love is a stranger. Receive, we pray, our grateful praise, our prayers of Thanksgiving, our offerings of thankful giving, and our vows of faithful living. Create in us grateful hearts for all the days and all the seasons that we might be a thankful people always. Amen, and a blessed Thanksgiving to you all.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you Pastor Riddle, wonderful. At this time, I would like to ask Councilmember Todd Lyle, and remember it's so Veterans Day, and thanking him for his service, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance if everyone will please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, our God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Todd.
Thank you Mayor.
At this time, I will call the meeting to order and report on our executive session this evening. This evening, we had three legal issues, one issue regarding pending litigation, one issue advice regarding an agenda items or existing ordinances, and one issue advice regarding existing noise ordinance. We had one contractual issue, a downtown economic development issue, no vote was taken in executive session. Do I have a motion to ratify the Mayor's Executive Session Report? So moved. Councilmember Lyle makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, second's motion, all in favors, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Deletions on tonight's agenda, are there any deletions on the agenda tonight from any member of council? Hearing none, we will move right into presentation. Our first presentation this evening will be the administration of the oath of office to the Lexington Elementary School Student Council by Councilmember Ron Williams. If all the members of the student council will please come forward. As members of the Lexington Elementary School Student Council, tonight is my privilege to swear you into office, so I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. Okay? I agree to serve.
I agree to serve.
As a Lexington Elementary Student Council Representative.
As a Lexington Elementary Student Council Representative.
I understand.
I understand.
That with this leadership position.
That with this leadership position.
Comes responsibility.
Comes responsibility.
I will be a positive role model.
I will be a positive role model.
Maintain good grades.
Maintain good grades.
As a class representative.
As a class representative.
I will abide by the school rules.
I will abide by the school rules.
I pledge to communicate.
I pledge to communicate.
With my peers.
With my peers.
And present their ideas.
And present their ideas.
Good job. Now I'd like to ask Ms. Hazel, if you could come down and help me pin the ladies while I pin the boys.
Everybody? Alright everybody, one, two, three. Do it again. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three.
And stay there for your parents.
Ms. Provey, y'all are welcome to stay and watch the rest of the meeting. Absolutely. Our next presentation this evening is a proclamation that will be read by Councilmember Kathy Manis, a proclamation congratulating Rod Dooley, CPA Practice Advisor for 40 Under 40, Councilmember Kathy Manis. Mr. Dooley, if you would, please come forward, we'd like to have you at the podium while she reads this proclamation for you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a proclamation of the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington, South Carolina, congratulating Rod Dooley on being named a 40 Under 40 Honoree. Whereas Rod Dooley graduated from the University of South Carolina in 2006 and was licensed as a Certified Public Accountant in 2008, and whereas he was named a Partner of Dooley and Company in Lexington in 2014, and has served as Treasurer for the Lexington Beautification Foundation and the West Columbia Police Officers Foundation, and whereas he serves as Treasurer for the Extradae Organization, a community development project, working to Longter Brewery to generate funds which will provide vocational training and guidance to an unskilled, underemployed, and high-risk population, and also aid other nonprofits who struggle to generate capital to perform their missions, and whereas the national publication, CPA Practice Advisor, recognized Rod Dooley as one of the 40 Top Practicing Accountants Under 40, and invited him to serve as a panelist during the Young Accounting Leaders Think Tank held in Indianapolis, Indiana in October. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and the council for the Town of Lexington that Rod Dooley, CPA, PFS, CFF, is congratulated on being recognized by CPA Practice Advisor as a 40 Under 40 Honoree, and he is to be commended and thanked for his outstanding dedication to his work and to the citizens of our town. Dated this 5th day of November 2018, Steve McDougall, Mayor.
Congratulations.
I think you have a special council person on the council who would like to come. Hazel, you want to come? Your family's here. Do you wear?
They're talking, they're being quiet over there. Sweetheart papers, man.
Come on little baby. Where's your brother?
Hey, hey.
There he is.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Rod, go ahead and take the microphone and talk to us a little bit, I know they don't just give those out. We're very proud of you and glad that you're in our community and super proud that you won that award, that's a national award and we appreciate you.
Fortunate I'm an accountant, so I'm not much on words. The crowd will move on, but thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you Rod. Our next presentation this evening is a proclamation that will be read by Councilmember Kathy Manis, proclamation congratulating Dr. Lucas Clamp, National Association of Secondary School Principals, 2019 National Principal of the Year. Dr. Clamp, if you would, please come forward, we'd like to read a proclamation for you. Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and before I want to start this, we have some young people here who are leaders at their school, some of them will maybe one day go to River Bluff, where we have a great leader who is our National Principal of the Year, and I had the honor of being there that day, and it was a great celebration, not only my community leader with River Bluff, but I'm a parent, and so Dr. Clamp, thank you for what you do for this community and for our students, and for especially Jonathan Manis, so thank you, Dr. Clamp. A proclamation of the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington congratulating Dr. Lucas Clamp, the 2019 National Principal of the Year. Whereas Dr. Lucas Clamp was chosen as the founding principal of River Bluff High School, where his progressive leadership style has created tangible, positive changes in local and international communities, and whereas each year the National Association of Secondary School Principals recognizes outstanding middle-level and high-school principals who have made amazing contributions to their profession and to students' learning, and whereas in October of 2018, after selection of three finalists, Dr. Lucas Clamp was announced as an honoree and will be a distinguished guest at the National Association Secondary Principals Annual Conference in Washington. Now therefore be proclaimed by the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington that Dr. Lucas Clamp is hereby recognized and congratulated for being selected as the 2019 National Principal of the Year, dated this 5th day of November 2018.
Mr. Mayor, you have a door there, why don't you come on up and have your picture back?
Good job, thank you Mayor, congratulations.
Mayor and members of the council, thank you so much for this opportunity tonight to be acknowledged. This award certainly, while it bears my name, it certainly is on the shoulders of so many amazing faculty and students at River Bluff. I'm honored tonight to have my mother here, who is my model and example of education, she's in the back. My sons are here, Ian and Alex, future Gators as well. Serving this community truly is a blessing and an honor, and to work in partnership with the town and with the amazing community members we have, it truly is an honor to serve, so again, thank you for this acknowledgement.
Congratulations, Dr. Clamp, thank you, appreciate you being here.
Mr. Mayor, not only is he the 2019 National Principal of the Year, his wife is Lexington One District Teacher of the Year this year, his mother is a former superintendent, and just an education family and doing a great job, and I was out knocking on doors and knocked on a Clamp door, I said, "Do you kind of look?", and he said, "Yes", and it was the very next morning that we were doing the celebration, I had been sworn to secrecy, so I didn't get to tell him you had already won, so I know he knows now, but we are very proud of you for this whole community, and thank you for everything that you do.
Very good, thank you Kathy. Our next presentation this evening is a proclamation that will be read by Councilmember Kathy Manis, proclamation congratulating Erica Page, National Association of Secondary School Principals, 2019 National Assistant Principal of the Year. Ms. Page, if you would, please come forward. Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, if you don't know it yet, you know it now. This is a great school district with wonderful students that we saw earlier tonight, with a wonderful principal, and the principal of the year, and now the assistant principal of the year, the national assistant principal of the year. So Erica, congratulations, I'd like to read this for you. Proclamation of the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington congratulating Erica Page, the 2019 National Assistant Principal of the Year. Whereas the role of the assistant principal has changed in recent years, and today's assistant principals are involved in all aspects of education. And whereas in 2014, Erica Page was named Assistant Principal at Pillion High School, where she has served as the College Board Testing Coordinator, Supervisor of the Center for Advanced Agribusiness, Supervisor of Guidance and Home Bound Administrator, and whereas the National Association of Secondary School Principals has recognized a National Assistant Principal of the Year since 2005, and this year's honoree stands out in her ability to excel in this ever-demanding role. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington that Erica Page is hereby recognized and congratulated for being selected as the 2019 National Assistant Principal of the Year, dated this 5th day of November 2018.
After Erica speaks, if Luke, if you'll come up, we'll get both of you picked. I know you're going to love that.
Gosh, thank you so much. My belief in a necessity of an equitable education is for all students, and it summed up my motto, "All in for all students", and that's what I do every day at Pillion High School. It is about them, and I am so blessed to be in such an amazing district, city, and town where students thrive, so thank you very much.
Congratulations Erica, thank you. What an honor to have the principal and assistant principal of the year for the entire nation and our community. Great job guys, thank y'all very much for what you do.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Many of you know that I am the Executive Director of Palmetto State Teachers Association, and that's, everybody is a teacher, no matter what you do in the school, and both of these fine leaders are members of Palmetto State Teachers Association, I am really proud of that, so thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good, nice plug. Our next presentation this evening is a proclamation that will be read by Councilmember Todd Lyle, proclamation, Saturday, November 24th, 2018, as Small Business Saturday. Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and just as a precursor, I think we're all proud of the education, I think in this town, we also are very proud of the small businesses, I look around the room, there's quite a few successful small business folks in the room, and so we thank you as well, integral part of a great city. We're not going to ask anybody to come forward on this because the Small Business Saturday Coalition is actually headquartered in San Francisco, so they'll actually be mailing this, it'll be put on their wall, and it'll say Lexington, South Carolina. Proclamation, a proclamation of the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington proclaiming Saturday, November 24th, 2018, as Small Business Saturday. Whereas the Town of Lexington, South Carolina celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community according to the United States Small Business Administration. There are currently 28.8 million small businesses in the United States, representing 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States. They're responsible for over 63% of the net new jobs created over the past 20 years, and whereas on average, 33% of consumers' holiday shopping will be done at a small, independently-owned retailer and restaurant, and whereas 91% of all consumers believe that supporting small, independently-owned restaurants and bars is important, and whereas 76% of all consumers plan to go to one or more small businesses as part of their holiday shopping, and whereas advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the county have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington, South Carolina, that Saturday, November 24th, 2018, is hereby declared as Small Business Saturday, and all citizens are urged to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday, and also of course throughout the year. Dated this 5th day of November 2018, signed, Steve McDougall, Mayor.
Very good, thank you Todd.
Mr. Mayor, I see the Addy family here, they have a small business on our main street, so thank y'all for being small business people on our main street, I'm not sure if we have any other small businesses here.
We have lots of small businesses here.
That are in here, that are here tonight?
We got Chick-fil-A.
Oh, Chick-fil-A, y'all were people, but oh, I love it.
Mr. Dooley, I believe your CPA firm's in the town, we got several.
Thank y'all.
Thank you Todd. At this time, I will read a proclamation declaring November National Hospice Month. This is a proclamation of the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington declaring November 2018 as National Hospice Month. Whereas Medicare's first proven coordinated care model, hospice is a program that works offering person-centered compassionate care, ensuring people dignity, choice, and quality of life, and whereas beyond providing physical treatment, hospice attends to the patient's emotional, spiritual, and family needs, and provides family services like respite care and bereavement counseling. And whereas every year, more than 1.5 million living with lifetime-limiting illnesses and their families receive care from the nation's hospice programs in communities throughout the United States. And whereas hospice care organizations are advocates and educators about advanced care planning that help individuals make decisions about the care they want. And whereas in an increasingly fragmented and broken healthcare system, hospice is one of the few sectors that demonstrates how healthcare can and should work at its best for its patient. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington, South Carolina, joined with All Seasons Hospice, that November 2018 is hereby National Hospice Month in the Town of Lexington, and all citizens are encouraged to increase their understanding and awareness of care at the end of life. Dated this 5th day of November 2018, Steve McDougall, Mayor, will also send this one in via mail. Thank you, Madam Clerk, are they here? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes, please come to the microphone, I'm sorry. I blew right by that one.
That's fine, I'm Mary Ann with All Seasons Hospice, and we would just like to thank all of you, mayor, council members, and the whole Town of Lexington, actually, we have a large patient base here, so thank you all.
Well, thank you for what you do, it's a very critical patient care that you give in the end of life, so thank you very much for what you do, and we will present this to you now. Very good, our next presentation this evening is from Major Matt Davis from the Lexington Police Department, a presentation to Special Olympics, South Carolina, from the Police Department, and Chick-fil-A Salute Point Cops on the Coop fundraiser.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Today, we have a special presentation, and I'd like to call a couple people up front with me, please, CEO of South Carolina Special Olympics, Mr. Barry Coates, come on up, our great partner, Ms. Britt Sims, Chick-fil-A, and we have some others we'll introduce to you in a few minutes, but we're going to start off with these, so there's not a whole bunch of people up top. The Lexington Police Department has had a longstanding relationship with Special Olympics, South Carolina, and Cops on the Coop is just one of the several fundraisers that our officers do each year for the over 28,000 Special Olympics athletes in the state of South Carolina. This past September, officers spent two days at Chick-fil-A Salute Point and raised almost $7,500 through donations from visitors walking into this restaurant and the drive-through lanes. The ability to fundraise at Chick-fil-A Salute Point is a huge part of the success to this event, and Britt Sims and her team are greatly appreciated, more than she'll ever know, we appreciate you. Events like this really speak to the incredible support the Town of Lexington community gives, not only to the Lexington Police Department, but also to worthy organizations like the Special Olympics. The Special Olympics started the year, the Lexington Police Department started the year with a goal of raise $25,000 for Special Olympics. To date, we have raised over $20,000 and still have two months to go before our year ends. With the support of the Lexington community, we feel like we'll be able to reach those numbers. At this time, I also like to bring up front Jennifer Steele, a coach and a parent of a Special Olympic athlete, also Nadine Coates, bring that up. And, Mr. Mayor, if you would, we'd like to have to take a picture real quick.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Very good. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Great job.
And I failed to mention the master behind, mastermind behind this whole thing, that'd be Ms. Jennifer Quincy. She is, if not for her, we wouldn't have half that money. So, what a great job she does.
She does a fantastic job. Thank you. Very good. That concludes our presentations for this evening. If anyone would like to leave at this point, you are certainly welcome to do so. If you'd like to stay for the rest of the meeting, that's fine as well, but we'll give you a few minutes to. This is the vision plan update for November 2018. This annual snowball festival, I can't believe we're talking about Christmas and snowball, but here we go. The 7th Annual Snowball Festival will take place November 30th through December 2nd. Friday night, November 30th, we will have a concert and carnival in the square. That will be from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. The tree lighting will be promptly at 8:00 at Lexington Square Park, corner of East Main and South Lake Drive, presented by the town of Lexington and Lexington County Recreation and Aging Commission. Saturday, December 1st, we will have movies in the park from 5:00 to 9:00 PM at the Ice House Amphitheater. That is located at 107 West Main Street. We will have two movies that night. The first one will be 'Twas the Night Before Christmas and A Christmas Story. Movies start at 5:30 and that is also presented by the town of Lexington and the Lexington County Recreation and Aging Commission. Sunday, December 2nd is our infamous Christmas parade that will start at 3:30. I think last year, we had over 100 floats in that parade. So, we're looking to top that number this year. That is on West Main Street and that is presented by the town of Lexington and the Lexington J.C.'s. For more information about the snowball festival or anything else going on downtown, you can contact Jennifer Dowden, our events and media coordinator, at 803-356-8238. Or you can reach her at her email, jedowden@lexsc.com. That is the vision plan update for tonight. We will move right into a traffic update from Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Jenny Lane and I-20 exit ramp improvements are fully underway. Please be aware of changing traffic patterns, shoulder work and nighttime lane closures in this area. SC DOT is scheduled to begin a sidewalk project along South Church Street near the Robert Street intersection. Be aware of traffic delays around this area. The next traffic committee meeting will be Wednesday, November 14th at 8:00 AM in the third floor conference room of Town Hall. Finally, if you're aware of any traffic signal issues, unsafe roadway situations or pothole that needs to be repaired, please call 803-358-7273. And speaking of that, Randy, remind me, I've got you some from walking for campaigning. I found several for you, so I'll give them to you at the meeting. I got pictures.
Very good. Thank you, Hazel. At this time, we'll move into public hearings. Public hearing speakers are limited to five minutes. Our first public hearing this evening is final reading of an ordinance to expand the downtown overlay. Councilmember Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The downtown overlay district allows some flexibility in the zoning and landscape requirements for properties that are part of the overlay. It is intended to encourage occupancy of existing buildings and protect the unique character of the downtown area. With the One Way Pair Project completed and plans being developed to widen North Lake Drive, the Planning Commission has recommended expanding the overlay district to include all properties that front on North Lake Drive and Columbia Avenue as shown on the attached map. I make a motion for final reading approval.
Kathy makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker, second. Submotion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all who's in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis. Final reading of an ordinance to expand the downtown overlay. Councilmember Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The downtown overlay district allows some flexibility in the zoning and landscape requirements for properties that are part of the overlay. It is intended to encourage occupancy of existing buildings and protect the unique character of the downtown area. With the One Way Pair Project completed and plans being developed to widen North Lake Drive, the Planning Commission has recommended expanding the overlay district to include all properties that front on North Lake Drive and Columbia Avenue as shown on the attached map. I make a motion for final reading approval.
Kathy makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker, second. Submotion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all who's in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Mayor Protam Hazel Livingston. Final reading of an ordinance regarding filing by candidates for mayor and council. Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The town council is being asked to consider changing its method of qualifying candidates for the municipal election ballot. Currently, state law allows either the petition method which the town currently uses or the filing of a statement of candidacy and a payment of a filing fee. There is currently little guidance on the allowed amount of the filing fee for nonpartisan municipal elections. There is some concern that a fee which is too high may be seen as inequitable. Attached is a list of filing fees for other jurisdictions in South Carolina. At the council work session in September, it was recommended that the filing fee be set for 1.5% of the total salary for the term of office. This would set the filing fee for mayor at $750 and for council at $630. I make a motion for final reading of approval.
Second. Mayor Protam makes a motion. Councilmember Baker, second.
I'd like to second that, too.
Any further discussion?
I would, real quick, Mr. Mayor. Just like to say that Todd Corns was big in helping get this done. So, I'm very excited to say we no longer collect signatures.
Any further comments? Hearing none, all who's in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. Final reading of an ordinance relating to the Set Off Debt Collection Act. Councilmember Ron Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The town currently participates in the Set Off Debt Collection Program offered by the South Carolina Department of Revenue through the Municipal Association. This program withholds income tax refunds from individuals to pay past due water and sewer fees when the individual has left the town without paying their final bill. Over the last three years, the town has collected an average of approximately $10,000 in bad debts using this program. To continue participation in the program, the town must adopt the attached ordinance and sign the attached agreement with the Municipal Association. I make a motion for a final reading of approval.
Councilmember Williams makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Councilmember Manis, second. The motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all who's in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. Final reading of an amendment to the lane closure ordinance. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. At the September 17 work session, council discussed an amendment to the restrictions for daytime lane closures due to construction on US 1, US 378 and SC 6. Ordinance 2018-11. A copy of ordinance 2018-11 and a draft of the proposed amended ordinance are attached. I make a motion for a final reading approval.
Councilmember Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lyle, second. Submotion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all who's in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. Final reading of an ordinance relating to the Set Off Debt Collection Act. Councilmember Ron Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The town currently participates in the Set Off Debt Collection Program offered by the South Carolina Department of Revenue through the Municipal Association. This program withholds income tax refunds from individuals to pay past due water and sewer fees when the individual has left the town without paying their final bill. Over the last three years, the town has collected an average of approximately $10,000 in bad debts using this program. To continue participation in the program, the town must adopt the attached ordinance and sign the attached agreement with the Municipal Association. I make a motion for a final reading of approval.
Councilmember Williams makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Councilmember Manis, second. The motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all who's in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. Final reading of an amendment to the lane closure ordinance. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. At the September 17 work session, council discussed an amendment to the restrictions for daytime lane closures due to construction on US 1, US 378 and SC 6. Ordinance 2018-11. A copy of ordinance 2018-11 and a draft of the proposed amended ordinance are attached. I make a motion for a final reading approval.
Councilmember Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lyle, second. Submotion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all who's in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. At this time, we will move into new business. Our first item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Lyle. First reading of an update to the Business License Ordinance. Councilmember Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Town has historically implemented the Model Business License Ordinance developed by local government officials in conjunction with the Municipal Association of South Carolina. In recent years, significant efforts have been undertaken to enhance uniformity of business license practice across the state to address concerns of the business community, members of the General Assembly and local officials. The latest update to the model ordinance incorporates the consensus changes that address the most significant concerns of all parties. In particular, the license due date has been changed to April 30th of each year for the new license period of May 1 through April 30th. Other technical updates have been included to address changes in state and federal law. No changes have been made to classes or rates as part of the update other than to clarify that non-resident rates apply to peddlers in NAICS Code 454390. The model ordinance continues to be structured to allow for periodic updates to NAICS Codes and related rate classes by resolution of council. The current classification of NAICS Codes, excuse me, the current classification of businesses by NAICS Code is unchanged by this update. Mr. Mayor, I request approval of the ordinance to adopt an updated Business License Ordinance.
Councilmember Lyle makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor Protam, second. Submotion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all who's in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Mayor Protam Hazel Livingston. First reading of the State Revolving Loan Fund Supplemental Ordinance. Mayor Protam.
Thank you. The permanent tie-in of the I-20 sewer system to the town's regional sewer system requires the construction of a new pump station on the site of the I-20 lagoon. The State Revolving Loan Fund has authorized funding of this project. In order to proceed with the financing, a supplemental bond ordinance must be adopted to incorporate the terms and conditions of the SRF program. So, I make a motion for first reading of a supplemental bond ordinance to authorize SRF financing of the I-20 pump station.
Mayor Protam makes a motion for first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, second. Submotion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all who's in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis. First reading of an ordinance, annexing Lexington County Tax Map, number 5422-02-006, located at 209 Parker Street. Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Patrick Kane owns one acre located at 209 Parker Street and has petitioned to annex the property. A single-family home is located on the site. Properties in town near this one are zone-protected residential and Parker Street is classified as a local road. Planning Commission will review this annexation during their November meeting to recommend the zoning and road classification for the parcel. I make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Manis makes a motion for first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker, second. Submotion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all who's in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. First reading of an ordinance, annexing Lexington County Tax Map, number 4200-09-102, located at 255 Clearbrook Circle. Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Karen and Kevin Goby own one acre located at 255 Clearbrook Circle and have petitioned to annex the property. A single-family home is being planned on the site. Properties in town near this one are zone-protected residential, too, and Clearbrook Circle is classified as a local road. Planning Commission will review this annexation during their November meeting to recommend the zoning and road classification for this parcel. I'd like to make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Williams makes a motion for first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lyle, second. Submotion. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Manis.
Yes, ma'am. You can go.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hanson, I didn't see you earlier.
I was hiding.
I'm not surprised. So, so this is in the subdivision off of Park Road? Is this where this is?
When the subdivision was developed, it was four parcels of family land and they sold the land to the developer of Dove Chase and retained some parcel, two parcels in the back.
Okay.
And as part of the stipulation of the sale is that they retain access to those parcels so that they could use that for family land, to build a family house.
Okay. So, they didn't bring in the whole subdivision? They kept that back part? And that's what we're annexing now? Is that correct?
The subdivision is already in. What we are annexing is a portion of the back parcel that is shown on that plaque that's in your package.
Right.
Because that's where, right now, that's the only thing that's being used is they're building a house on that one acre.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all who's in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. First reading of an ordinance for a budget amendment. Councilmember Steve Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The chiller serving the police side of Town Hall has failed. The cost to repair would be significant and not advised for a 15-year-old unit. The Planning, Building and Technology Department would like to use money budgeted for repairs to purchase the new chiller. The following budget adjustment is requested for the Planning, Building and Technology Department. Reduce repairs, building facility by $57,500, add to capital outlay $57,500. I make a motion for first reading approval.
Mr. Baker makes a motion for first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lyle, second. Submotion. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Baker.
Assuming we've done our due diligence on the cost of chillers.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I could answer?
Yes, sir, Mr. Poole.
So, that is, that price, that is the budget adjustment, is an estimate that we got from the person who provides maintenance, but this is out to bid and it will be that or less. So, it could, the bid could result in a lower price, in which case we've only, of course, spent whatever the low bid is.
Understood. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Poole. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all who's in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. At this time, we will hear announcements from Councilmember Steve Baker.
All right. Go off the script for my first one. Got, congratulations to our patrolman, Sean Ludwig. His daughter, Emma Rose Ludwig, was born this morning at 11:24 and so congratulations to him and his wife. Next, please come out for the town's first hops and harvest festival this Friday at the Ice House Amphitheater from 6:00 to 10:00 PM. Tickets are $40 and include a complimentary beer tasting glass, unlimited tastings and live music. Tickets can be purchased at Fats Cafe or at icehouseamphitheater.com. Proceeds from this event will benefit the Virginia Hilton Park Committee in their efforts to upgrade the park as part of the town's vision plan. As the mayor announced, the town's annual snowball festival starts Friday, November 30th with a great list of events through Sunday. Please visit www.lexsc.com for all the details. Town Hall will be closed on Monday, November 12th in observance of Veterans Day. We would like to thank all of our veterans, including Councilmember Lyle, for their service to our country. Would also like to say thank you to everyone who came out for the parade. The traffic committee will meet on Wednesday, November 14th at 8:00 AM in the third floor conference room. Council will meet again on November 19th at 6:00 PM for the council work session. Council will meet again on November 19th at 6:00 p.m. for the council work session in the Eli Mack Room. The Planning Commission will meet Wednesday, November 21st, at 8:00 a.m. here in council chambers. Thank you to the police department for another successful fall festival. This continues to be a great event. Town Hall will be closed on November 22nd and 23rd for the Thanksgiving holidays. We would like to wish you and your family a happy and safe Thanksgiving. And last but not least, I know everyone's excited for this, there is a midterm election tomorrow, which includes a town election. I encourage everyone to go out and vote. Thank you for watching your town council in action tonight.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Baker. Anyone else have anything they'd like to share? Any other members? Very good. Any questions from the news media? I don't believe we have any news media with us tonight. Public comments, are there any comments from the public regarding any items on tonight's Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I am Constance Character Fleming, and I reside at 604 Hill Street in the great town of Lexington. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, and our illustrious council. Thanks for permitting me to speak this evening. I'm speaking in reference to the passing of the change from collecting signatures in order to be placed on the ballot to now paying a reasonable fee to do so. Thank you. On a number of occasions over the years, this matter has been brought before council, complete with signed petitions, and discussed to no avail because the idea was quickly dismissed. Thank you again. Due to many other complaints and too serious situations that I personally experienced, made this decision quite important. My first shocking encounter involved a citizen coming to his door with a gun telling me to get my blankety-blank off his porch, or he was going to shoot me on the spot. Keep in mind, this was my first time back out because I just had major surgery three weeks before, so I wasn't able to quickly get off the porch, but I left as fast as I could. However, I did manage to get my signatures. The next time, I was unable to get my name on the ballot because others were also collecting signatures and telling them specifically not to sign my petitions, because if so, I would probably get on the ballot and defeat that said candidate. I've been told of other negative situations, such as disabled individuals not being able to collect their signatures because they weren't even able to get to the door. However, this decision tonight will alleviate these types of issues. Thanks again for working and with and for your constituents, and we look forward to the future activities. Now, tomorrow's election day. To all under the sound of my voice, please don't forget to vote. Some of you have already voted absentee, so thanks to you as well. Please don't ever forget that every vote counts, including yours. To those of you on the ballot, please remember the decision to run for public office and serve in that capacity is more than just a notion. It's serious business, and as registered voters, we can choose to do so. Always remember faith, patience, and peace. To all, have a good day tomorrow. Godspeed. God bless the wonderful town of Lexington, South Carolina, the great state of South Carolina, and the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fleming. Ms. Constance, I would just like to thank you for preparing those words and coming here before us this evening, and it was, I'm just glad that we are at this point and that we've done it, and I'm glad that we don't have to hear those kinds of stories anymore, and again, thank you.
Any other comments regarding items on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, that concludes our business for this evening. Thank you for watching Town Council Meeting for the Town of Lexington. This meeting was held at Town Hall on Monday evening, November 5th, 2018. A recording of this meeting will be aired on the town's information cable channel, 1301, several times during this week, and the video will be available on the town's website at lexssc.com. On behalf of Town Council and staff, I wish you all a good evening. Without objection, we are adjourned.